Somebody online that would probably appreciate it. And what he's going to say is that actually you and Doug, there's a sign up that says that you guys are no longer.
No trust can't come for burgers?
Okay.
We've been trespassed?
Go ahead.
So the thing will be used here around and it's just a number of capacity or how many people are using coming in. And the dome will be used at a capacity with the building that you see. Therefore, there's going to be additional applied there to service the banquet hall in the reception area. So that building could be determined to be used for restaurant overflow from the restaurant along with the dome period given weekends. If they're not using it for banquet halls.
Okay.
So it's going to be a thing that's going to be able to be used continuously for revenue, for tax revenue and for their ability to, you know.
The, on the depiction, the floor is concrete, correct?
Yes.
What sort of finish is it going to have?
Well, that's what we're working on right now. So we're going to have two inch or four concrete on it or it could be left from concrete from there. And we will just put the final commercial flooring on it like you see it up there.
Okay.
Or something like that. And it takes us three, uh, tiny ton of powder of what the interior decker is.
Okay.
And we'll have HVAC, uh, easy to lose all the capacity there. That, that is also, um, that with the double T's and the depth, it's kind of thermal. So people think that there's going to be a lot of waste of energy and in actuality it's not because the depth holds thermal mass. And the thermal mass will be directly.
Is it required to be sprinkled? Does it need to be sprinkled?
Yes.
That's what we're working on.
Got it.
For a company that could be a condition, um, I guess, three, three to five hour fire waiting on the concrete depth.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions? Uh, could you just state your name just for the folks online?
Sure, Stephen Sles.
Awesome, thank you.
So if this is going to be for weddings and banquet hall, larger events, um, if I recall, they had in the past indicated that they would be willing to, um, entertain or, um, an agreement with Lion Metal for the additional parking. If they don't do that, where are all these people going to park?
I think that they are, did I read in the packet that they are in talks with VFW?
Yeah.
For overflow during non-conflicting events.
Right, after there's non-conflicting events, but I didn't know if it was the entire parking lot or.
So there will be, there will be that whole possibilities. I think the main possibility is that for the weddings that will be going on there, they will have valet parking.
Right, yeah, I was at the.
Valet parking will be included in the package in the wedding. So the valet guys can run and handle the parking.
Right. Okay, yeah, because I was at the planning meeting also and that's what they indicated, usually for the larger weddings and stuff like that, that they do like, um, the valet and they could valet over to Lion Metal. My concern is if the VFW does have something happening, where are we going to park all these cars if they don't have an agreement?
The VFW talked to us last time and they were agreeing that we'll work on them.
I've never been disappointed by the creative, um, minds involved at Grays Mill, honestly, over the last couple of years. I know we've seen a few iterations of things, um, but the creativity is always there. And the end product that we've seen in everything that he's done so far has been spectacular. So I'm excited to see this come to life.
Motion to approve or motion to accept planning commission's recommendation?
Second.
Any further comments? This is just the recommendation, uh, this is I. Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Nick Carries five zero. Item J is the enacting ordinance nineteen eighty-six. This is first reading. Um, is there any opposition to putting this on consent? And I'll verify that with trustee Betsinger as well. Uh, if he's not, we'll see this on for separate action. All right, thanks Steve. All right, item K, ordinance nineteen eighty-five establishing an SSA, SSA forty-two for Ricky Rocket subdivision. This is waiver first, passage on the second. Done yet?
Talking about this one for a while. We've had our public hearing related to establishing this special service area over by Gaston Wash. Now this is the enacting ordinance. Once this is approved, then we'll be able to take this and get it recorded and get it officially established.
Comments, questions, motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Marisak, second by, um.
Sure.
Baumann? Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Nick Carries five zero. Uh, last item for separate action nineteen eighty-seven, amending various sections of the village code. I'm not going to summarize and waiver first passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
I had to get one in before Doug.
Very nice, there's been a motion and a second, is there, um.
Third.
What I was going to say, does staff have anything to add first before we, you know, vote?
Uh, no, it's been a collaborative effort. These are just some cleanup items that need to be taken care of in the code, so.
Perfect.
So I, could you please clarify, there are different timeframes listed under section twelve dash thirty-nine? Oh gosh, where is that? B, B and C, and then when you come over to the exemptions, there are, uh, there's a different timeframe there.
Um, yes, so we do have exemptions for like construction activities and then obviously exemptions for government projects or emergency, um, actions that have to take place. So, um, this is all stuff that our department keeps an eye on and informs people of as they're getting permits and things like that. But generally, we've got our, our basic noise ordinance hours.
So the earlier portion is for, uh, individuals who are mowing their lawn or something like that. And then the exemptions would be for.
For construction.
Construction, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Couldn't call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Thank you, Nick Carries. All right, moving on, item for discussion, uh, we have three of them this evening. Uh, class G liquor license request, uh, for new restaurant. I know that the applicant is here, you guys can come on down. Uh, does staff have any intro for the petitioner?
Um, no, we have, um, Sushizu that's going to be opening at fifteen thirty-nine Douglas Road over by La Chiquita, um, passed all of their final inspections. Um, so now they're pursuing a liquor license, liquor license for the restaurant. And so they're here before you tonight to request a class G license for their new restaurant.
Mr. Kramer, how are you?
I am good.
It's great to see you.
David Kramer, I'm the attorney for John Cordero, he and his partner operate the restaurant under SB four, we have service license. We all have multiple patients, that's why I've shot insurance line up. Lots of required state files, so.
Is the green light on in your microphone?
It is.
Perfect. Just wanted, just looking out for my friend on Zoom, that's all. All right. Any questions for, uh, for the petitioner? This is a sit-down restaurant?
It is.
Yes, perfect.
They'll have about ten employees. Excuse me, their hours of operation will be eleven in the morning until ten at night.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Perfect, we're excited about it.
So my friend Baumann here is giving me a hard time. It's the fifty-fifty, so I'm, I'm okay with this.
The G, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
We like the class G.
Yes.
All right, I'm not hearing any objections.
No, just a clarification, uh, from other petitioners that have come forward, uh, requesting the liquor license, especially in that corridor where that was the primary focus. Alcohol slots, things like that. So the fact that it's a sit-down restaurant, food is good and we're anxious to try the food. So that's absolutely, thanks for being here.
When are we opening?
Maybe a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And the only apology I have to you is that it took us, uh, two and a half hours to get to you on the agenda. But I'm not hearing an objection from the board, which means, uh, you should be good to proceed and work with staff to make, make the class G. All right? Thanks, John, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
All right, um, item B for discussion is SCADA discussion.
Nope.
Yeah. Have a cup of food. Thank you so much. What are the other ones?
All right, thank you President Broly. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to introduce, uh, Tom Kapinski. Tom is the, uh, villages water and sewer superintendent with the public works department. Uh, he's going to be, uh, running through a few of these slides, uh, with us, uh, to talk a little bit today. So just want to kind of have this as a very high level overview. What's to come really is, uh, at the November twenty-eighth meeting, we will be bringing forth the recommendation, uh, to move, uh, to a new SCADA system. So those are kind of the things that we want to cover here quick. Just to kind of give an overview, uh, it is a larger scale item and so something that we want to, uh, be able to throw out, give information, um, to the board. So that way, if there's any questions to staff, uh, there's ample time to, to be able to get those out to us. So we'll try to move quick. Uh, I know everybody's itching to get going and we've got another one after this, so, uh, we'll get, we'll get going here pretty quick. So, uh, with that, um, I'd also like to, uh, thank, uh, Ken and Tyler, they're here from, uh, Metropolitan Industries. Uh, they'll be here, uh, throughout the, um, presentation and be able to answer any technical questions that the board may have, um, at the end of the presentation. So thank those guys for sitting here, uh, through the board meeting for this as well. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Tom to kind of go through a few different things.
Okay, thank you. See this, uh, special is, uh, certain SCADA, which is a man with a supervisor in front of the manager.
If you just use the arrow there, Tom.
Tom, will you move that microphone just a little closer to you, please? Thank you.
Is the green light on? Um, let's see, what was that? Okay. No butter.
Oh, okay, how about now? Uh, let's see, so what is SCADA? It's a workflow, a system, a process to where we go and understand what is happening in our, uh, water treatment process, the wastewater treatment process, our, uh, equipment out in the field as well as in our plants. And then, uh, what do we have? We have currently a fixed base radio system and that has been in place for roughly twenty years. Uh, since then, the, uh, industry and technology have changed to where, uh, there is more of an internet or a cloud-based, uh, system that is what is, uh, being used now. Radio, you know, has its fine points, uh, cloud-based system, you know, has its, uh, fine points as well. So, uh, further on in the discussion, we're going to, uh, turn it over to Director Wolf for the next few points.
So setting the stage for the Lake Michigan, uh, water for the village of Montgomery. So some of the things that we will need to do regardless of, uh, the Lake Michigan, uh, switch over will be monitoring of the lift stations as well as our, our current system. So, um, in a coming slide, Tom will go through some of our assets and kind of show, and it'll depict, uh, the assets that will remain, um, throughout the switch over to Lake Michigan and the ones that will obviously be terminated. So we'll go over that. Uh, we're talking about phased approach, uh, something that, uh, we've been talking with Metropolitan, uh, in regards to, uh, running our systems parallel, uh, which is something that I believe we have in further slides as well. But again, it'll come up where, um, we'll, we'll have a phased approach to, uh, the certain assets that we're going to target first. Again, uh, we're looking to move forward with the sanitary lift stations, uh, as an introduction, uh, as the phase one. But also a large part of the phasing is just procuring the equipment necessary, um, to do the transfer over. So, um, that's something that we've been working heavily on, um, with Metropolitan through this process. Impact financially, so when we look at, um, the radio systems in, in the quick overview that staff performed, uh, we start talking about, um, upping, uh, the software packages in order to accommodate and achieve somewhat similar to what the Metro Cloud system has available. Um, it, it got to be quite expensive rather quickly when we talk about bringing in internet or the use of cellular, uh, data transmission, um, for, uh, what we would need to move forward. So again, we're still looking into and finalizing everything as far as, uh, price comparisons go. But all, one of the other, uh, factors taking into place here is somewhat of a, of a same scenario where we've got a sole sourcing, where, uh, Metro Cloud really provides, uh, a service that, um, no other, um, integrator can really provide to the village too, to a degree. So it's very hard to make, um, apples-to-apples comparisons when we look at, uh, the different systems.
So let's see, uh, okay, the top row, uh, shows, uh, our current assets. Where we have our, uh, treatment facilities of the line plant over on Nell Road. We have our, uh, ion exchange wellhouse over on Wabanzia behind Farm and Fleet. Wellhouse fourteen is on Fairfield out west. Some more of our assets, we have shallow wells, which are ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen, which is, uh, basically east of, um, thirty-one, long to, well, except for twelve, which is, uh, in front of the public works garage. Uh, we have raw water deep wells, uh, scattered, you know, throughout, uh, the incorporated limits of the village. And then we have the elevated tanks, which are probably the most visible since, uh, you know, they're a hundred plus, uh, feet in the air and, you know, we have our signage on them. The middle row is some other assets that we have that are basically nondescript buildings, but they do have, uh, and serve a great purpose as far as being able to where if we have one of our wells out for rehabilitation, we need to be able to go and move water from one pressure zone to another. So we have the ability to do that. Uh, we also have a pressure reducing station to where we're able to go and that also helps us move water from one zone to the next. And in front of our public works building, we have a ground storage tank that we utilize for extra capacity, to where it's available to us. Uh, the very bottom row are assets that we currently have or, and that is not on a SCADA system, or assets that we will be needing to get when we go to, uh, the lake, the alternate water source with, uh, Lake Michigan water through DWC. So the lift stations, we have two lift stations. One is at the Farm and Fleet, uh, property, which handles Farm and Fleet and Niners, which, uh, dumps, uh, further on down, that has been in service since, uh, the Farm and Fleet was installed or constructed back in the early two thousands. Uh, the Fairfield lift station is also basically from the early two thousands vintage and that supply, that takes care of, uh, conveying wastewater, uh, to further on down line to where it could go to Fox Metro. Uh, in the future, with, uh, DuPage Water Commission, we're going to need receiving stations. Uh, so we're able to take the water from, uh, DuPage County and then be able to go and, uh, move it throughout our system. And, uh, that's what I've got for right now. Uh, this image here, uh, gives a, uh, high-level view of our system to where it shows that we have, uh, three zones. Uh, we have some of our assets, the, uh, elevated water tanks that are quite visible and then, uh, where some of the treatment facilities are as well as where, uh, the Fox River is.
So let me talk a little bit about, uh, the benefits, uh, for the proposed future system software. Um, with the age of our current, um, software that we're, we're utilizing, one of the things to point out is that a lot of the equipment with the radio systems are becoming obsolete. So as we, um, continue to move forward with utilizing that system, that's always a, a concern that we have, uh, as that, that equipment is, is aging. Um, another component to that is the difference between the radio reads and the, um, software package that we're using, the WIN nine-one-one, is the difference between that and the cloud-based system, which utilizes, um, the Metro Cloud, um, to basically perform updates without, um, having to come out and do those different things, um, in-house, um, at the facilities is, is a huge advantage, um, in, in looking at those things. So, um, things to consider there. Tom talked about the assets that are, that'll be coming online. So when you looked at that, that asset, um, chart, there really aren't many, uh, of the villages assets that are really going to go away from the perspective of SCADA monitoring. So when we look at this again, um, that there's a definite need, uh, to continue to evaluate those. The other, uh, side of the Metro Cloud advantages is the ability to capture data, um, something that we've been struggling with lately as we're working, um, on, constantly working on our water reduction plan. So we're, um, having the ability to, um, extrapolate data and be able to use that in, in comparisons and analysis for us to help reduce water loss. Operating and hosting on the cloud, like I just talked about, uh, has advantages, uh, as opposed to, you know, upgrades, uh, and things with traditional software. Um, the lime softening plant will be, um, slash public works garage, uh, will be the master site moving forward. We talked about, again, reducing the hardware and software, uh, computer terminals, um, for upgrading. Going to, uh, this cloud system utilizes the Amazon cloud servers. Um, so this is dedicated secured link, um, to the cloud, um, with redundant cloud servers, um, that will work, uh, throughout the country. So the other part of this process that, um, staff has been working on is we've, um, incorporated, uh, Matt Warner from Responsive, uh, the village's IT consultant, to make sure that, uh, these systems are, um, the most secure and that the Metro Cloud system, uh, you know, obviously covers all the bases and checks all the boxes that relate to cybersecurity since, um, the current system that we have in radio read is completely offline, um, where we'll be bringing this on and have obviously some vulnerabilities and risks, uh, moving forward. Again, we talk about the licensing, those will all be processes that are eliminated through, uh, going to the new software. And then accessibility is probably the major one. So our existing system now, everything is hosted on a main computer that's housed in the, um, the laboratory, uh, at the lime softening plant. Um, so any changes, any, um, observations that, um, that are wished to be made, um, throughout the course of day or night, um, are conducted from that host computer. This new system will allow, um, our staff members to have access to, uh, multiple different, um, degrees of access, I should say, um, to the system. So some will be, um, they have the ability to just monitor the system without making any adjustments and others will have limited adjustment capability and then there's obviously a master, um, as well. So a lot of advantages that come from possibility and reduction, uh, reduced time, uh, and, and labor, uh, when it comes to callouts, uh, on after-hours and weekends and so on and so forth, so.
Okay, the monitoring and, uh, the control system, uh, you know, there are a number of features to where, you know, as Director Wolf has gone through as far as the military-grade security and, um, not having to go and purchase servers or, uh, controllers that are proprietary, there are redundancies built into the system. Also, the alarm notification where, um, it can call out, uh, the person on call or the water superintendent or one of the, uh, water operators. So that is another added feature. And, um, you know, I guess with the, uh, chance precipitation, over the next couple of days, we'll have AccuWeather, which will be another, uh, resource for us to see how, uh, snow, uh, is going to go, snowplains going to go. Uh, you know, one thing with it is that we wanted to go and have a, uh, presentation, uh, discussion, uh, not at, uh, this meeting, but at the next meeting, we'll have a more formal proposal and, uh, be able to go and, uh, let you see what we've been working at, probably for at least the year and a half that I've been here. But with talking with other staff, it, this has been a two, almost a three-year process. And, you know, we have data that we, uh, are able to go and get to where then we're able to go and analyze. We're, uh, working with EIR on the, uh, water loss, trying to see where that, uh, where we can do, um, you know, we, we can see where we're, uh, are there issues with, uh, the calculations or are there, uh, items out in the system? So that we can look to see if we can improve upon that number. And then we're going to look to go and act.
So again, this is pretty kind of high level, but again, wanted to give some background since, um, I'm sure that a lot of board members aren't familiar, um, with SCADA system and what it does and truly how critical it is to our operations and monitoring, um, of our system. Probably could have asked, uh, trustee Guyer to give the presentation. He's the most familiar, uh, with SCADA of, of anybody in our traditional system that we've used, um, moving forward. But, uh, we feel that this truly is, uh, the future, uh, that not only Montgomery, but, but all municipalities are going to is giving their operators the ability, um, to view and manage the systems to a degree. Um, won't, won't truly eliminate one hundred percent, uh, callouts. So we'll still have items where employees need to come in and address issues, you know, manually turning valves or, or different components. But, um, definitely drastically reduces that and gives our operators too, the comfortability in knowing what the system is doing, um, in those hours in which they're not there managing the plants. So, um, again, we'll have more information, uh, proposal, uh, recommendation for the board at the twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, one of the reasons too why, uh, we wanted to come tonight again was to give this information. If there's any questions that you have in the meantime, we're happy to try to get those, uh, answered as quickly as possible. Metropolitan Industries has provided the village with a quote. Um, the reason for us moving forward at the twenty-eighth meeting is that quote will expire, uh, December one. So we're hoping again that, that there'll be approval at the twenty-eighth meeting, um, so we can lock in that pricing for the necessary, um, software and hardware items that will be needed for, um, the upgraded SCADA system. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or Tom or anything technical. Uh, Ken and Tyler are here as well.
So was the, uh, upgrading the system or replacing it with something that is more up to date, uh, in terms of technology? Was this part of our costs, our overall costs, was that included in our costs for going to this water, water source?
No. No, these, this, the system, you know, again, when we look at that asset chart, you can see that, that there are very few things that are going to be added to the asset. So realistically, this is a part of, of, you know, O and M that, that would take place regardless of, uh, where we're getting our water, whether it's currently through the aquifer or Lake Michigan.
And, uh, and a, a second question, uh, kind of along what I was saying. This is, um, this will be bringing us up to date in terms of how we should be operating the water system. Do you understand what I'm saying? When we're, because we're getting this new water source, uh, I, I don't, I don't want to say we're outdated. Are, are we outdated?
Uh, the, the current system has its limitations. Uh, again, it's a radio system, so it operates on a line-of-sight, uh, frequency. So in the event of weather, uh, in the event of, uh, cables, uh, malfunctioning or the antennas malfunctioning, we can have issues. Um, however, it does bring other, um, advantages to it where, again, as I mentioned before, the system is one hundred percent offline. Um, so it reduces the, the village vulnerability, um, to, to, um, any type of cybersecurity issues. But again, very, very limited on our abilities to control, um, any of our assets outside of the water treatment plant and also the response time, time from when, you know, we say we reset a motor, um, at a well. It's, it takes substantially longer for that transaction to take place, whereas the system is almost immediate.
Does this also, is, would, will this also help us with the monthly water billing?
It will help us with the ability that if we want to dive into further data as far as it relates to pumpage, um, what we're putting out, um, yes. As far as, as far as, I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth or, or. I don't want to put words in your mouth or assume, but I think you're talking more regarding the collector system that's independent to the meter reading system. They are very much totally separate.
And that, but in that case, we just invested in the line-of-sight technology, right?
No, that's a closed frequency.
That's closed frequency, okay.
It's not live yet, but this, this setup is for the operation of our assets. And we're talking heavy on water here, but it's also for our lift stations on the sewer side. So, I mean, it's just, it's operations of our assets. Okay. I'm assuming this is standard practice in, at this point, or it's going to be, the cloud-based system is more standard across the industry?
Yeah, I think Tom can speak to that. The other communities that he was in, I know he integrated the MetroCloud system at Freeport, so.
Correct. This would be the second community that I've integrated the MetroCloud. Although in all three communities that I've worked with in Illinois, we've used the software that will go and help us operate. Just in, you know, this instance and the previous instance, it was, you know, cloud-based. The very first community I was at was the old server type only because the year before I got hired, they replaced all the servers. So, you're not going to go and, you know, you're going to wait till you get your useful life and then transition on over.
Got it. Okay. Thanks, Tom. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a few. So, I'd like to start by saying Metropolitan is a great company. I've worked with Ken before when I worked for the village and you guys have training seminars or seconds and non, especially at the lunches. So, having said that, I've never been a big fan of cloud-based or proprietary. Right now, we're Allen Bradley and there's a lot of integrators that can work on that. I'm assuming that only Metropolitan can work on your own equipment?
You want to come up to the microphone? Just, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So, the MetroCloud SCADA software is just like a monitor to your computer, if you will, so it can still read in whatever controllers we have and the equipment you have and what the proposal will go over next week does include Allen Bradley controllers. So, we're not locking into any kind of proprietary equipment or anything like that. It's all still open to whatever integrator would wish to work on it.
Okay, and that goes with the cloud base also? So, if, for any reason whatsoever, and I'm just looking in the future, if we decide to discontinue our contract with Metropolitan, then we can have any other integrator come in and operate the system or make changes to the system on the cloud base? Or is the cloud base just your cloud base?
So, the cloud infrastructure is just like the IT backbone, if you will, of where the application is running. The application itself is also not proprietary. And should the Village of Montgomery ever decide to go with another vendor other than Metropolitan Industries, we can then provide the village with a copy of their application and all data we've collected since that the village could then go forth, buy their own servers or cloud space if they wanted to and then run the application still.
So, so we own, we own whatever's on the cloud?
You own the application that's running.
Okay. And you said it was Amazon cloud-based. So, do we contract direct with Amazon or do you guys contract with Amazon? How's that work? I guess what I'm getting at is I don't want to be in a situation where something happens and we don't have control over our own system because we don't, we no longer have a contract with you or you no longer have a contract with Amazon. And that's what's always concerned me. And just bear with me. I'll give you a little bit of history and I know you all hate this when I do this. But when I first started, we were DC pair in the village, which basically turned on wells, turned off wells, gave you tower levels. And then we went, and it was all done through DOS on a computer. We, when we went to SCADA, we went with Allen Bradley so that it was open platform. And we went with the radios, as Mark said, so it was closed. There was really nothing much around at that point in time. But we chose the radios we chose because of the security on the radios. And while it does take four minutes to cycle through, when you give it a command, we didn't feel that that was a burden based on the security because the last thing you want is to someone to get into your system and make changes to your system and run the village out of water or adjust the chemical feeds on something and, you know, superchlorinate the whole village and started getting people sick. So, we went with that. And in the process, as we, as we added infrastructure to the village, we determined part of our problem that we were having too is we didn't have a SCADA integrator. So, if somebody came in and gave us a package for a new well, who other general contractor was, he would just put out a bid to all the system integrators, SCADA integrators, and then whoever was lowest bid, that was the guy. And as you guys know, you can program SCADA's different ways. And so, we had so much as far as different types of programming involved in, in how people would program. So, we decided that we were going to put out for bid for a system integrator, or a SCADA integrator. And we did that through the cooperation with EEI. And we ended up, we picked a SCADA integrator, and I believe it's the same one that we picked years ago, and had a contract with them. So, that integrator, whenever there was a project in the village, the general contractor had to use that integrator. And we did that for that reason so that we, that is the guy who put it in. He knew how he programmed. If there's a problem, we would just go to him. So, we always had that flexibility. I know the system is getting older and I know some of the PLCs may not be as readily available or the cards, especially the analog cards. I know we're getting scarce. But I don't know if that justifies upgrading everything. We're going to be going to, you know, Michigan Water here pretty soon. We're not going to have treatment plants that we're going to have to supervise or that we're going to have to operate. You know, Marcus said something about callouts. We have always had the policy when I worked there is that if you receive an alarm, and I used to take a laptop home and we could dial in. And if I knew, when I was watching something, we would plug the phone line. And that was our, that was our air gap is, it was only plugged in when we took the laptop home and I'd come in the next morning, you unplug it so somebody couldn't get into it remotely via telephone. But, so, it's, we've always had the policy that if you receive an alarm or you solve something, you would physically come in and go to the site because I don't care how good a SCADA system is, if there's an issue, you should take care of it at the site and not remotely. You know, I can see both sides of, you know, you have better, more control as far as instantaneous control. You can see what's going on. But, you know, it's kind of a redundant system. Yes, you control everything from the lime softening plant, from the lab, but each location has its own self-reliant PLC that operates that location. So, if the, if the computer went down in the lab, each site will operate that site without any input from the master PLC or SCADA. So, the security is a big thing. As you know, in water, backflow prevention, the best backflow prevention is an air gap. And it's the same way with security. For SCADA, the best thing is a standalone. And you don't have any control of it anywhere else or through any other means other than at the site. I can appreciate, you know, it's all military-grade, but, you know, how many times has someone, you know, found their way into the Pentagon or the DOD and, you know, caused problems? There's always articles about other water systems in the country. The one I remember the most recently was in Florida where somebody did gain access to it and increased the chemical feed rate. And luckily, there was a, an operator on-site that saw that and quickly corrected it. Otherwise, they've overchlorinated the system. Likewise, you can remotely, you can get into a system and change settings to the point where you don't receive alarms for like tower levels and just, you know, turn pumps off, change level settings and literally run a village, you know, out of water where nobody has water at their tap. Those are the things that concern me. And the amount of money we're going to spend to upgrade for our current needs, which in seven or eight years, it's not going to be our current need. We're not going to need to operate the plants. You know, the lift stations are pretty much, you know, self-reliant. You know, you guys have a great package for lift stations, to control lift stations, and that's basically, you know, just an alarm package. I just, those are some of my concerns with, with going this route and spending this amount of money when we're, where we're at, where we're going to basically change the way our whole system operates. The, see, I think I got one other thing down here. And then the, another thing I would be interested in is, I know there's going to be probably a monthly fee for further services. Does that monthly fee include a certain number of costs? Does it include all the, all the maintenance, all the changes that's required? I mean, is it a flat fee and, you know, it requires me, is it, you know, like, like an assurance that you get on your appliance at home, you know, that whenever it breaks, you just call and they come and they fix it for free, no deductible, no extra charges? I have that question. The other question too is, is how does it compare the monthly fee and the fees to what we're expending right now with our current integrator to come in and make changes? Because, you know, really, once, once you have everything programmed and it's in, it pretty much runs itself every now and then. You, you may come across something that you may want changed because it makes it easier to operate something or, or to pick up an alarm or something like that. But, you know, once it's installed and going, it's usually other than, you know, hardware where a failure, it's set. So, that's some of the other questions I would have as far as costs and how it relates to what we're paying now.
Can I have a moment to address some of those?
Sure, yeah.
So, with the traditional system you guys have in place now using a radio-based system, the problem that most often comes to play is that using a radio-based architecture, you have what they call like a master location, which then sends out data to all their remotes, all the elevated tanks, all the wells. It brings the information into the central PLC and stores it so the SCADA system can then read it. The problem with this type of system is radios are typically line-of-sight. So, as trees grows, as antenna connections grow weak, you'll lose connection to those sites, but the master computer is still trying to reach out to it, which slows your poll time. So, on a good day, when, in the winter, when the air is thin and there's no leaves, you could have a poll time of four minutes. But during the summer, as a new tree grows due to new development or a new building goes up, it's very likely your poll time can go to eight to 10 minutes. And then you'll ask yourself, is eight or 10 minutes acceptable in the situation of a major main break right outside an elevated tank in the town's hemorrhaging water? Maybe not so much. With a cloud-based system like we're proposing using cellular, the master computer still exists, the master SCADA PLC, but it's not reading in all the information from the entire town. It's sending out just the control of starting wells, stopping wells. The master PLC is still there. So, that way, in the event of a SCADA system outage or failure, whatever you want to call it, the system still works as you're describing. There's still PLCs everywhere. They're all Allen Bradley PLCs, so it's not integrator-specific and it will work SCADA or not. With the cellular plan, there are the cellular, what we're proposing here, if, let's say that master computer went down, we're still talking to all the individual sites directly. We're still talking to the elevated tanks. We're still talking to the wells. That way, should that master SCADA link go down, the operators are still receiving phone calls for low tower levels or high tower levels. They're still receiving phone calls and text messages for pump failures, which in the current system would not happen. If the master goes down, you lose all communication to everything. Now, the town also has, I believe, a few repeaters on top of the elevated tanks. The elevated tanks then talk to the remote sites. If that elevated tank radio goes down, you lose the whole site of town. That goes to that, to that repeater. In a cellular system, again, we talk to each site directly, so that's not a concern. With the SCADA provider, the one problem we've heard the most in all the different towns we've serviced is that if you do go with one provider who has one or two programmers, should they go on vacation, fall sick, have an emergency, the village is the one stuck because now they're waiting on that integrator to be able to have somebody come out. Metropolitan thankfully is large enough to where we have six full-time on-staff programmers who are staffed 24/7. In the event of emergency, the village will be provided with a 24/7 technical support number. Should a problem happen, it goes through our entire staff of controls engineers who are housed in and around Romeoville, Illinois, who should something happen, we can all dispatch to Montgomery within an hour or so of the phone call. Now, thankfully, with the cloud-based system, with it being internet-connected with the security measures we have in place, if the village allows it, we have the ability to log in remotely to the wells and the towers should the operator need a more urgent response, cutting down your integrator response time from sometimes days to usually within 30 to 45 minutes. So, we've had a lot of success with municipalities who are having problems with a pump doesn't turn on, the well's not starting and they don't know why. They can call a 24/7 number and one of our teams of, one of our controls engineers will gladly assist. Another thing that was brought up with the system was the monthly fees that are associated with it. So, going to a cellular-based system and getting rid of the radio-based system, of course, just like the cell phone in your pocket, there is a data plan associated with so. The data plan is a flat rate and it does include all the software licensing, all the tech support, everything like that. That way, the municipality doesn't have to worry about any unforeseen costs. So, everything is budgeted in that amount. Tech support, they can call and, you know, it's taken care of. And there's no, like, one of the great things about the cloud platform is if you have a traditional-based SCADA system, it's priced on the number of tags or data points that your system's pulling in. With a cloud-based system, we're allowed to build your application sort of dynamically. So, for example, we build it now to work now with the current infrastructure, but within the next eight to 10 years, where there's going to be a new water source. The new water source is going to have new booster stations, new reservoirs. We can add on without needing to completely rebuild the system. It's a very plug-and-play-as-we-go kind of thing. I believe they're going to propose during the next meeting, the kind of phased approach we have to work with the equipment gathering. So, you'll be able to see that it's going to be essentially puzzle-pieced along as we go instead of having to be all at once. That way, the operators are trained and know how to use the software as we go. As far as the security goes, we have been independently audited and made sure we're following all the great cybersecurity practices. We have a team of, like I said, controls engineers on staff who are receiving training to make sure they're up-to-date on all the security practices. One town you mentioned, the Florida town that had the problem with the remote access tragedy. But, the software they were using at the time is, was IFEX was the name of the SCADA software. To remotely connect, they were using a free service called TeamViewer that lets them punch in a six-digit number and connect to that computer. They were protected by the six-digit number. Any bored teenager sitting at a laptop can guess a six-digit number and they happen to stumble upon Oldsmar, Florida, which is a tragedy. But, the question then becomes, should they have, they protected their SCADA system, which is exposed to the internet with a six-digit number? I would argue not. So, with our system, we use a multi-factor VPN, which means the user, each user in the town who has the ability to access the software gets their own dedicated username and password that's made up by Metropolitan Industries, provided to the operator. It's a super-secure password. And then, once they connect with it, it then prompts the user for an alternative form of identification. So, most of us use online banking these days. You know, when you log into your bank and they also want to text you a code, as annoying that is, what it's really saving you is if someone guesses your password, they probably don't have your phone in their hand as well. So, they can't just log in. So, we have the VPN with the multi-factor to prevent unauthorized access, which that alone solves 99.9% of security risks. The point one being if you're dealing with an insane level of attack there. But, I'll get back to that in a second too. So, once you get the VPN username, password and multi-factor in, that just lets you in your bubble, if you will. The SCADA system still has a separate username and password that the operator will use to log in for a third level of credentials an operator will need to access the system. Once accessed, the system then has multiple user permissions. Once accessed, the system then has multiple user permissions to where we can say, for example, Director Wolf has the ability to change what he wants, but new operator who just started can only view the system. Once that operator shows that they're trustworthy and has gained enough experience that you feel like they can make changes remotely, permissions can be granted to that user on a user-by-user basis. If the village decided to take the route that they want no remote control over their infrastructure, that's able to be done as well. Once the, the other kind of cool thing about the software that we use that, again, kind of sets the bar higher than your average SCADA system is that, I mentioned that each user has their own, not only VPN credentials, but SCADA username and password. The system then logs everything that happens in the system. If you log in, log out, if I log in or log out, if I change a set point from, let's say, 25.3 feet to 26, it shows you what was changed, what it was from, what it got changed to, who did it, and date and timestamp. So everything gets logged in the system, almost to the point where it becomes too much. But luckily, there's an array of filters that can be applied. That way, only the operators who want to see, like, you know, set point changes can see that information. But the idea here is that every alarm's logged when it calls out. It shows you if the operator answered the phone or did not answer the phone. It shows you if they entered their PIN to be able to acknowledge the alarm when it calls. Everything's logged because security is taken to that next level with us. We really do believe that we have the most powerful SCADA platform on the market. But all the power in the world means nothing if it's not secure. And knowing that everything is going internet-based, we had to make sure that we're, the bar's here and we want to be here, you know? So, currently, MetroCloud is over 70 municipalities strong across the United States with over 600 remote sites watched across the country. And we have, like I said, a powerful team that is able to monitor and control all this. So, there's not a security concern in my mind, but we're constantly, you know, reinvesting into our staff, making sure they're as trained as possible, which honestly, when it comes to SCADA, most municipalities take the staff of, or take the stance that IT should do it. But then, IT comes around and the operators are like, oh, don't touch that because that can't go down. So then IT gets scared of it. And what you end up happening is a server that's been running for 10 years that only gets rebooted in emergency, which itself is vulnerable. And at this day and age, I'm of the belief that having a system air-gapped is more of a hindrance than it is beneficial. Simply because if you have an operator who might live outside of city limits and they get a phone call saying it's an emergency, if they have to dispatch to the water plant to just see what the alarm is, and if it's something that's not necessarily important, we're wasting that call-out time. Or if it is important and the site that had an issue is maybe 10 minutes away from the operator's house, but they had to travel half hour to get to the water plant, we're extending the downtime when truly it might not need to have been done. So there's a lot of benefits to having a system that allows the operators to log in remotely. And I believe it'd be a big asset for the Village of Montgomery.
I always took it as every alarm is important.
Yeah.
And it requires a response, no matter what it was. Okay. So, yeah, we had talked in the past before about going to fiber and cellular. Is there a reason we're just not looking at the radio system other than, I guess my big concern is spending all this money to outfit all these well sites that we're going to take out of service? Is there really a cost benefit to change everything at the lime softening plant, well eight, well 14, 15, all the remote sites? And then seven or eight years from now, we're just going to idle these things. We're going to decommission the plants. We're going to idle the wells other than running them once a month for back tea and for emergency backup. I would just have to see the numbers on that, just to see how all that works out. Because if it's going to be a huge expense, I, and I guess the other, one other question is, is, and again, nothing against Metropolitan, but why just Metropolitan? There's other companies out there that do this also. You're going to be asking for a waiver of bid and going with them solely. I get it, they're local, they're a good company. We've, they have a lot of pumps in the ground with us. But, you know, again, have we looked at any other providers and receiving any quotes from them?
Yep. So I think you bring up a lot of great points, Trusty Geyer. And I think a lot of those things are things that we can address and discuss further in depth with you before obviously coming forth with a recommendation at the 28th meeting. So, but I think a great conversation and really validates the reason why, you know, kind of having this presentation tonight and Ken and Tyler coming in to answer some questions and obviously giving us some next steps to follow up with you on. And hopefully, we can talk more about those and get it pointed in the direction that we feel is the best interest of the village.
Very good. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Last up for discussion is the 2022-2023 snow removal and ice control plan, which regardless of the time tonight, is also a very important plan of attack. So welcome, Director Wolf.
I will try to make this as quick and painless as possible here.
Quick and painless is just tell us the changes.
So, the quick and painless is essentially that there are no changes to our program and the way that we do things. Or have done things traditionally. We've made a few modifications over the years, but nothing drastic. So one of the major things, again, for, uh-oh, what's going on here?
How many mailboxes are going down this year?
None, zero.
Is that in the plan?
Zero.
Don't need a number, just a percentage.
So I won't bore you with our mission statement. Again, that hasn't changed. But obviously, our objective is to efficiently and effectively clear snow from the roadway basically as fast and safe as possible is the drilled-down version. Also, want to hit on the fact that we provide services to our facilities as well. So obviously, that has a high level of importance as well. Again, just talking about the tools that we used. And one of those, again, obviously, talked about in the last presentation would be an added service with AccuWeather, but we use Weather Sentry DTN. This really allows us to look at radar, look at forecasted events far out in advance so we can start drafting plans. One of the things we'll talk about here in a minute, obviously has a major effect on that, which is staffing and in our planning. So again, this is a major tool. This is just our vehicle and equipment list, just updated like we do year to year. Really not too much to change, or too much change there. But again, always want to thank the Village Board for your guys' support with providing us with the, with the equipment that we need to go out there and do our job. Something that we talk about internally in our snow plan, snow meeting that we had, in fact, about a week ago internally with staff, is making sure that all of our staff is using the proper equipment to do the proper job. And so that's one of the things that we focus hard on here, is making sure that we have each specific piece of equipment to drill down and do a specific task. We'll talk about anti-icing and de-icing. Again, they know, goes in line with what we've done in years past. We make a conservative effort to go out and pre-treat roads when we have forecasted events ahead of time. We utilize our IGA, excuse me, with the Village of Oswego in supplying salt brine in return for doing application on some of their roadways. We talked about road salt earlier tonight. Again, we're in a great position this year. We've got roughly 1,200 to 1,800 tons of salt from the previous year on hand, along with our order that we've put in for this year. So calibration of trucks is something that we always feel is important and is conducted each year as well to make sure we've got consistency throughout all of our routes and that all of our pieces of equipment are putting out the same rate per lane mile as the others so we have that consistency across the board. So, again, those are things that we really look to push. Challenges, like always, are staffing. When you look at the Village of Montgomery, which we'll go through on the next slide, our staffing is slim for our operations when we talk about our routes. Facility size, that's one, we can check that box here shortly. We'll have a new facility up and running for next year's winter operations. That'll be really critical for us moving forward. Emergency water main breaks is always another issue as these pop up and, you know, staff time is required to address those issues. And water production obligations is a major one, too. You know, come 7:00 AM, 365 days a year, those tests need to be formed, those wells need to be read. And so again, we have to look at that strategically when looking at our snow operations to make sure that we're accounting for those things. Traffic is another one, as we've all experienced with the improvements that have happened recently at Orchard and 30. Really sheds a light, which paving is done, by the way. So it should be better. But traversing from the west side of town traditionally to the Public Works Garage has been a challenge in years past, given certain times a day that we always deal with. And we talk about our operations. We do 162 lane miles of roadway. We've got roughly 14 different facilities. We'll be adding an entire facility, which is going to be a lot to take on as well with the new Public Works building, right? We tend to neglect ourselves. That's the last lot we do always. But now, we're also going to have the new building as well as the existing Public Works site that'll have to be cleaned and maintained throughout the winter. Just a broad overview, we look at things, we've got six zones, residential routes are broken down. And then we've got our primary routes. And then we've also got a facilities route. And then last year, we added our alternate cul-de-sac route, which we were able to utilize once or twice. We didn't have too much need for it last year. We were able to keep up with the snow. But that was one thing that we added in last year's plan. Again, we look at the facilities, just kind of a breakdown, really nothing new there as far as Village Hall and Police Department is concerned. And again, we'll have the plans to add for the new Public Works in next year's. Route assignments, we look at things, you know, obviously, you look at the staffing levels. And again, when you break it down, 21 employees seems like a lot. But when we're running 12 to 14 to 16-hour maximum shifts and working with day-to-day standard operations such as customer service appointments for meter installations, high-water bill complaints, addressing the water treatment plants and processes, as well as whatever other issues may come up throughout the day, we get thin pretty quick. So really, again, this, you know, drilled down, trying to work through this quickly. But obviously, with weather becoming a factor here, obviously in tonight's forecast, it just goes to show we're in that time of year. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we had our internal meeting a week ago. So our staff is well addressed as far as their responsibilities and obligations moving forward and how we do things here in the village. And again, we're always looking, I can't stress this enough, a huge thank you to our street superintendent, Sean Murphy, does a fantastic job of monitoring the weather, working collaborative with myself and with Tom, our water and sewer superintendent, to make sure that we address all of our staffing needs, whether related to snow operations or otherwise, throughout the course of our winter months. So, again, thanks to the board for your support. I know winters here can be difficult. We obviously have our share of issues and complaints. But I think, at the end of the day, I think the Village of Montgomery, at least in my time, you know, here, in my nine years, I can say consecutively that we've always done traditionally a superb job of snow removal throughout the village and hope to continue that moving forward.
Thanks, Mark. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All right.
No.
No.
Mark, that's not accurate.